Welcome to tonight's meeting of August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four for a special meeting. Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the City Council Special Meeting of August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We thank you for coming and would like to remind all in attendance that our meetings are subject to the rules of decorum that are posted inside the chamber doors. These rules are in effect while all meetings are in session as well as during breaks and transitions between meetings. We want to be sure all feel welcome and remind all there is an expectation that no attendee shall disrupt this meeting and that threats and intimidation are prohibited. No attendees shall engage in audible expressions of support or opposition for any speaker. Signs and placards are prohibited and all attendees shall remain seated in the seats provided, not in the aisles nor shall the doorways be blocked. The purpose of a special meeting, the mayor, this evening, we are holding a special meeting in place of the regular study session. Following council comments and city managers' report, there will be one presentation and one item for city council action. The only item up for a vote tonight is the first reading of Councilor's Bill twenty-seven, which proposes ballot language to amend the Westminster Charter regarding the election of city councillors by geographic wards. If this item passes, the second reading will occur at the regular council, city council meeting on August twenty-sixth. And just to clarify, the firefighters' bill does not have to be read twice, so we will see that next week also. But that's why you're not seeing both tonight. Roll call, please.
Counselor Carmelia.
Present.
Counselor Demat.
Present.
Counselor Azadi.
Here.
Counselor Ha.
Present.
Mayor McNally.
Here.
Mayor Protem Normella.
Here.
And Counselor Ireland.
Here.
That brings us to the city council comments. That brings us to city managers' comments.
Read some comments. She and I.
Oh, you aren't on my screen, sorry. Counselor Ireland.
So I have some comments about what's transpired at the last meeting when it has to do with wards. I'm reading, I was reading the code. It says that ordinances need to be separate. And so I'm thinking if we had three wards with two in each ward and then you, I wanted two at large. That two at large should be a separate ordinance because you're expanding the council. Is that true? And it's in eight point ten about expand, I mean about everything being a separate ordinance. And I, I think that expanding the council should be a separate ordinance on the ballot.
Thanks for the question, counselor. So with regard to the proposed ballot language that was drafted for last week and also for this week, the ballot language that's proposed would modify the city charter to provide for election of council members by wards. And with this week's draft, the, the edit is to create a system where there would be a total of nine council members elected instead of seven, right? So.
But you're expanding the council by two, so isn't that a separate ordinance?
So the, the ordinance describes a new system of governance and I think that it's intended to offer the voters the option of electing council members by ward and having two additional at-large members. So I believe that is appropriately contained within the package that's on tonight's agenda for council's consideration. Obviously, that's a choice for city council as to whether or not that's the ballot language that is desired to move forward for voters' consideration in November.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's constitutional. Also, I talked about the five percent versus ten percent. That deviation is thirty-eight hundred people. I just want to know who we're trying to protect because you can, and Legacy Ridge is in the middle, so I am thinking we're either going to have to move it up north or down south. So that's thirty-eight hundred people, so you can grab somebody that you want out of that situation. So that is why I'm for the five percent and not the ten percent. I think it's kidnapping people. It's not the best thing for the citizens and that's why I wanted wards in the first place, so we didn't have this kind of stuff going on. So that's why I suggested five percent and we never really had a vote on that. We had a second and we didn't have a vote. And I don't think that was right either.
Can I ask a point of order? Dealt with this in the past. We have this item on the agenda right now as council comment. So are we, and I just want to know for my own being because I have some thoughts on this too, but should this wait until that is motion on the table?
I think that would be appropriate because the special meeting agenda tonight includes the opportunity for council comments, manager comments, and then a presentation, all of which come before that agenda item on the wards ballot language. So if, if there could be a discussion at the time of the wards ballot language is being considered, that'd be my suggestion.
Thank you.
Well, you know what I want to talk about. So also, I went to the state of the city this week. Our city manager Andrews and Mayor McNally spoke and they both did a very good job. Thank you for doing that. You know how much work that is. I just want to say that. Thank you.
Counselor Ha.
Yes, thank you, mayor. I actually wanted to say the same thing. I wanted to say that the mayor and our acting C M did a really good job at the state of the city. And, and then the next day was the volunteer appreciation dinner. And so I just wanted to thank all of our volunteers once again for all the great work that they do. Thanks so much.
I thought somebody was down here. No? It's hard. Tonight is, remind me, my stuff's not working, so I'll have to twist my head around to find you all. Okay, city managers' comments.
Thank you, mayor. And we're having a look at that right now, so staff is looking into why your panel's not working. Apologies. I do have a brief presentation tonight, so if I could have the next slide, please. By way of city update, we really want to flag this for our community that we do have a public safety town hall scheduled. That is Mayor Nancy McNally, Mayor Protem Sarah Normella, and the entire Westminster City Council invite you to the City Council Public Safety Priorities Town Hall that will be held this Thursday, August twenty-second from six P M. to eight P M. at Fire Station Number One. If you're unable to attend that session in person, we will be live streaming that on both the city's YouTube channel and our Facebook page. Next slide, please. This is by way of city update, talking about the Small Business Capital Grant Program. The City Small Business Capital Improvement Project Grant closed on July first. This is our annual program. Staff received thirty-five applications requesting over one hundred and six thousand dollars in grant funding. And that will leverage approximately three million dollars in private investment from our own business community and support four hundred and fifty jobs in Westminster. Next slide, please. An update on our calendar ahead of us. Things to know, inclusivity board is meeting Wednesday, August twenty-first from six P M. to seven thirty P M. That's right here in City Hall. Next is our Special Permits and License Board Meeting. That's on, also on Wednesday, the twenty-first. That's from seven P M. to eight thirty P M. Right here in council chambers at City Hall. And flagged already for you, the City Council Public Safety Town Hall, again, six P M. Thursday, and that's at Fire Station Number One. Movie in the Park this week. Super Mario Brothers is Friday, August twenty-third. That's seven to ten P M. at Legacy Ridge Golf Course. So if you haven't planned to attend that, that will be fun, weather permitting. So plan on attending on Friday night. Next slide, please. Coming next week, city managers' release of the proposed budget. So in my managers' comments at City Council, I'll present to you the draft budget for two thousand and twenty-five. That's just the beginning of the process for council review and engagement and input, so I want to flag that. There's a long period of time, once this, once you get this very draft document, for you to review it, provide us with questions and comments, and we'll then build the budget to suit based on your input and feedback. We, if city council decides so tonight, there will, there is scheduled the second reading of the council's bill adopting ballot language with respect to wards, and that is contingent on tonight. But we do have it on the agenda in the event that council takes first reading action tonight. If not, then this will not be on the agenda next week. We also have a resolution, as the mayor mentioned, adopting ballot language regarding the fire department facilities in operation. And that is a resolution, so it does not require being dealt with tonight, but it is on the agenda for next Monday. Next slide, please. No information, only items tonight, mayor, and so we are ready to begin the rest of the evening.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions of city managers? Mayor Protem?
Manager Andrews, I just had a question on the, the small business grants. I'm curious to know, did we give a grant to everyone who applied? Or how does, do we have more demand than what we're setting aside?
Yeah, great question. Thank you. So staff's going through those and I'll be able to provide an update as to the outcome of that. I think mainly tonight, wanted to communicate how strong that, that program response was and what we're, what we've seen. But that's a great question and we'll get more information to you once we've gone through all of those requests.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? My, my names are working now, so sorry about that. That brings us to presentations. And we're going to receive a presentation providing an overview of the domestic violence high-risk team and proposed family justice center. And I have been looking forward to this. I know DA Mason, you're great. And so I look forward to what you have to tell us.
Mayor, thank you. Chief Hubbard is going to open up the session tonight and District Attorney Mason will be up right afterwards.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilors, Norm Hubbard, chief of police, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to share this very important cause with you. Tonight's presentation is about the Adams County Family Justice Center. The Family Justice Center is a multi-agency, multidisciplinary center that ensures that victims of domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, and child abuse and other crimes have access to all the needed services in one location. This access is critical to support the victim, enhance their safety, improve access to services for victims as well as the victims' children. Here tonight to present on this topic in much clearer detail is District Attorney Brian Mason from the Seventeenth Judicial District, which covers Adams and Broomfield Counties. Also with him tonight, from his office is Chief Deputy DA Stephanie Fritz. And I'll turn it over to them.
Welcome. Thank you, chief.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor Protem, distinguished members of City Council, City Manager Andrews. It's an honor to present in front of you tonight. I've spoken to this distinguished panel before. I think the last time I was here, we were talking about the subject of fentanyl. But I have not spoken to you since many of your newest members have joined, and so it's an honor to see all of them and to see all of you tonight. My colleague Stephanie Fritz and I tonight are honored to speak to you about the important topic of domestic violence, what we at the DA's office are doing to combat domestic violence, and importantly, a community-wide effort that our office is leading to bring a groundbreaking concept to the Seventeenth Judicial District, and that concept is called a Family Justice Center. As Chief Hubbard just stated, we're going to get into this a little bit more detail later in the presentation. But a Family Justice Center is a one-stop shop for victims of domestic violence, human trafficking, sexual assault, and other crimes such as elder abuse, depending on how you want to create it, to give those victims one place to go to, to get all of the services that they need. And there are really important public safety and public policy reasons why a domestic violence, a Family Justice Center, I should say, protects domestic violence victims the best out of any model in the country. And we're going to get into that. So next slide, please. When I took office, one of the things that I said is that I wanted our team and our office to think outside the box on how to address the important scourge of domestic violence. Has anybody on this, as everyone on this panel knows, domestic violence is a problem in every community. Domestic violence skyrocketed during the pandemic and continues to be one of the most charged and most egregious crimes that happen here in the Seventeenth Judicial District. Now, as everyone here knows, the city of Westminster is in two different judicial districts. We have your Adams County part and then the First Judicial District has your Jefferson County part. Coincidentally, as I introduced my colleague, both Ms. Fritz and I live in Adams County and live in Westminster. So we have made this presentation to many other councils within the Seventeenth Judicial District, but I think we're both particularly pleased to be in front of you tonight since this is our community as well. One of the first things that I did when I took office, when we were talking about how to better prosecute and serve domestic violence cases, was to create a specialized unit for that purpose. The office had always prosecuted domestic violence cases, but we had never had a specialized unit that actually brought in experts within the office and from outside the office to take on these cases. So we created the special, the special victims' unit, and I asked Stephanie Fritz to be the leader of that unit. The next big thing that we did was create what's called the Domestic Violence High-Risk Team. The Domestic Violence High-Risk Team is made up of community organizations, law enforcement, and the DA's office throughout the Seventeenth Judicial District to identify immediately after a victim has been victimized, those victims who were at the highest risk of lethality, and to provide them with the services that they need immediately so that we don't actually see them on an autopsy table. And I'm sorry to be so graphic when I use that phrase, but it is quite literally what we're trying to do. We're trying to prevent another domestic violence fatality. I'm going to let Stephanie talk a little bit about what the DVHRT does, DVHRT does in our next slide.
So we received two million dollars in grant funding for the team. And Westminster was one of our earliest law enforcement agencies that joined the team. We also included your municipal court as well, since you see all of the misdemeanor DV within Muni Court. And I also have the honor of coming from the Muni Court. I was a prosecutor there for two years. And so we incorporated them in and we meet weekly, and these are all the different agencies that are there. And so once that victim has been identified by your patrol officers, which they have all been trained along with Matt Nyheart, we did intense four-hour trainings of all police personnel before they were onboarded onto the team. Patrol identifies these high-risk victims and then we meet weekly and Project Safeguard or Family Tree. There's no silo of communication anymore. We're saying this victim needs services in this way and they just raise their hand. These were our initial members, and if you go to the next slide, we've, we've increased to over twenty-five members. And we are using the ODARA risk assessment. It's validated on both men and women. And it was what Jefferson County was already using. And so when we were creating this team, we're very mindful that we wanted to incorporate all of Westminster in what's already happening. So we choose ODARA because of Jeffco already using it. So that's what patrol is doing while they're on scene. If we go to the next slide. And this is just an update of the police form, so it's on that first page. It's a series of different questions, asking questions to recidivate. And if you look at them, a lot of them make sense. Are there minor children in the home? Does a victim have access to a phone? Are there children from another, does a couple have children from other relationships? Because that actually is also a risk for lethality. If there's children that are not the offenders, the victim's risk increases. Were there threats of suicide? Are there, is there substance abuse? And there's a whole series of questions. It's then scored and a score of seven or higher gets funneled to the team. And so this is just a brief timeline of our domestic violence high-risk team. And it's really serving as the foundation of our Family Justice Center. We're learning how to communicate different governmental agencies, community agencies, and working out the kinks in communication so that when we are one day co-located in the Family Justice Center model that we'll talk about more, we're already starting to build that foundation by doing these weekly meetings. And if we just keep going through these slides, you'll see how we've expanded. And we're providing culturally specific services as well within our high-risk team.
So I'd like to just talk to you a little bit about the data so far. Again, the high-risk team is something that had never been done in this community before, and yet because we have implemented this, one, we are collaborating with everybody who has something to do with domestic violence. And that just didn't happen before, and so there were different silos. You have community organizations that work on housing for people who are victims. You have community organizations who are working on getting child custody or child services. But by bringing everyone together on this team, we are able to provide all of those services in a discussion immediately, particularly to victims at the highest risk. And as Stephanie said, that is the building block for what will hopefully someday be a Family Justice Center where these are, where these organizations are all co-located. And the statistics so far are really very impressive. Two hundred and forty-five individuals have been identified as high-risk since the creation of this team. In the last quarter, ninety-one individuals received services, support services. Eighty-one were referred to community partners for case management, therapy, legal aid, housing, and other domestic violence-related support. In our last quarter, the DA's office conducted fifty-four hours of training of police departments in the dynamics of domestic violence, best practices, strangulation and stalking. That training piece is really important, and I'm going to just brag on my colleague for a little bit because Stephanie Fritz is without question one of the foremost experts on domestic violence in the state of Colorado. But not every police officer, when they join the force. And we have a lot of young officers across the metro area because of so much turnover in our police departments, know what to look for and know the dynamics of domestic violence. When a police officer is on scene, speaking sometimes to an abuser, that abuser is often terrific at being able to manipulate conversations and manipulate situations. And so the training helps officers know what to look for, what to recognize, what to be suspicious of when someone is not saying anything, or what to be suspicious of when they are. So that training has been critical to the success of this team. Next slide, please. That's the slide that just reinforced what I've said three or four times now, and that it's that the DVHRT is the foundation for a future Family Justice Center. Steph, you want to take this?
Yes, this is from, every year, there is a release to DV fatality review, and it's a review of all the homicides and adjacent homicides in domestic violence situations. Like DA Mason said before, we've seen our numbers statewide rise in twenty-one and twenty-two and in great numbers. These are the statistics from two thousand and twenty-one. What is most upsetting about these statistics is if you look at Adams, the only metro region that has a highest, higher number of homicides is El Paso County. Unfortunately, we have more per capita than any of our other metro region cities or counties in this area. And so if we can get folks funneled to the Family Justice Center early, and this will be also for folks who will not call the police, who are seeking help, may not want a police intervention, which will show that most, a lot of our DV victims, there's not been homicide victims, there hasn't been a police intervention. We will then be doing homicide intervention when we have an F J C.
So when a domestic violence incident occurs, that victim could need multiple services. And I will jump ahead a little bit in this presentation by saying the most dangerous time for a victim of domestic violence is when she or he is trying to get away, is trying to get out. That is the most dangerous time. That is when the most fatalities occur. And so that's why it's so important for us to be able to get services to victims of domestic violence and survivors as quickly as possible. Here are some examples. Medical treatment at the university hospital, a protection order, something from Human Services, divorce and custody-related issues, follow-up with law enforcement if they have involved law enforcement. follow-up with law enforcement if they have involved law enforcement, forensic interviews of children. Children who witness domestic violence are also victims and survivors too. And as part of learning about what happened, particularly if they decide to cooperate with law enforcement and we proceed with a criminal case, is interviewing those kids. Follow-up with the prosecutor from my office, counseling services, et cetera. We're gonna show you in just a second a little map about a hypothetical victim here in Adams County, how far she... And I use the term "she" only because domestic violence can happen to anyone. But the statistics are very clear that women are victims and survivors of domestic violence in higher numbers than men. So, we're gonna just show you how many miles and how many hours a victim of domestic violence has to travel. Next slide, please. Okay, Steph.
And so, this is a presentation we give frequently. We just used an address in Commerce City just to show a hypothetical victim. So, after an incident, a victim may need a forensic examination. Oftentimes, survivors of domestic violence suffer from traumatic brain injuries. They've been strangled or sexually assaulted. So, they have to travel from their home. And in this hypothetical address in Commerce City, it's 25.4 miles or 36 minutes. That doesn't include the time waiting in an ER. You have to be cleared by an ER doctor prior to being examined. And then, the time, these examinations are really extensive. They're about six hours long and they're very evasive. Oftentimes, victims may want to apply for a civil protection order. A criminal protection order may not cover everyone in a home. So, then they have to go petition the court in Adams County. And I'm having trouble seeing the time, but it's 30.4 miles or 34 minutes.
Next slide.
Oftentimes, a victim might seek resources from the Department of Human Services with TANF or things like that. That is 23.6 miles or 34 minutes. And this is just travel time. Family law help. So, beyond just a civil protection order, there may need to be orders on petitions regarding custody and divorce. That's a whole different agency. And that travel time is 20.2 miles or 36 minutes. Follow-up with law enforcement. Oftentimes, patrol is responding in a situation that is high intensity and trauma. Detective needs to sit down and do a more thorough interview. And so, that would be 6.4 miles or 16 minutes of travel time. The forensic interview of the children, we're doing more and more forensic interviews of children. In strangulation cases in particular, it's been very fruitful in when we're charging these strangulation cases because they're often witnessing and interrupting the strangulation incident. And it's important for kids to be able to tell the story in their own words and get the services they need. That's 22 miles or 34 minutes. And then, our office. We often meet with victims several times. It's important to build rapport, explain a very complex process, and do further interviews about the history of their relationship. And that's 30.6 miles or 34 minutes of travel time. Counseling services. We've been really lucky to partner and really develop a robust relationship with Reaching Hope. And they provide trauma services for survivors of domestic violence so that they can cope with what they've experienced. And that's 12.4 miles or 26 minutes. And when you add all of this together, a victim has traveled 171 miles to access services. And there could still be more. This is just the tip of the iceberg. By car, this would have taken a survivor of domestic violence 250 minutes or 4.17 hours of travel time. And if they have to take public transportation, it's almost unsurmountable. It's 22 hours on a bus. And this doesn't include the time at each individual place doing an intake. They may not have access to quality childcare at this time. And so, a Family Justice Center would solve all of this because we would all be co-located. It's the model that you all have with Porchlight in Jefferson County. Let's repeat it, the next slide.
So, this brings us to what we really wanted you to hear about and that's the Family Justice Center. Now, Westminster is unique in that you already have a Family Justice Center in one of your judicial districts. It's not in the city, but it is in the First Judicial District and that's called Porchlight. Porchlight is one of about two or three Family Justice Centers, two in the Denver metro area. We want to do something even better than Porchlight, although Porchlight is a terrific model for us. One of the most persuasive, for me, statistics about the importance of Family Justice Centers is this. There are about 150 Family Justice Centers nationwide. In every jurisdiction with a Family Justice Center, domestic violence fatalities have gone down. In every jurisdiction in the country with a Family Justice Center, domestic violence fatalities have gone down. And that again goes back to some of the building blocks we've just been talking about. When you look at that map and you see all the different places that a victim of domestic violence has to go to get services, you can understand why that's such a dangerous time in that victim's life. Because an abuser, domestic violence abuser, one of the classic parts of domestic violence is control. And an abuser can control a victim's ability to get out of the house, can control a survivor's ability to even drive their own car. And so, if you only get to one of these places and you got seven more to go to, first of all, your chances of actually making it to all those places are low. And for those who are in the most dangerous situations, the lethality factors go up. So, next slide, please. These are just some of the benefits. Increased efficiency, obviously reduced homicides is what is most powerful for me, increased victim safety, increased autonomy and empowerment for victims, reduce fear and anxiety, reduce recantation and minimization by victims. As Chief Deputy Fritz said, it is important for me to say publicly, we don't hope to build a Family Justice Center with the sole purpose of getting more convictions. Now, it is my job as the elected district attorney to prosecute cases. That's what we do. But for some victims of domestic violence, the idea of calling law enforcement is a barrier to them getting help. And so, a Family Justice Center model, our Family Justice Center model, will not require cooperation with law enforcement or with the district attorney's office in order to receive services. Now, should that victim choose to cooperate, then we will be there, ready to help them and ready to prosecute those cases. Next slide, please. We contracted last year with an organization called Alliance for Hope. They are the national biggest player in the field of building Family Justice Centers. I encourage you to, if you're interested later, to learn a little bit more about them. Their director actually was on the Oprah Show and President George W. Bush happened to see it and brought him to the White House and used the alliance's model to start increasing awareness of domestic violence. And Family Justice Centers started springing up all over the country. So, they've done terrific work. As an update on where we stand in this process, having contracted with the alliance, we had what's called a listening tour back in February. Some of you were able to attend portions of that three-day session. Certainly, members of the Westminster Police Department were there. Your former city manager attended. Most recently in June, we had two days of strategic planning where we brought all of our stakeholders together again, including folks from the city of Westminster to talk about next steps, to talk about our vision for what a Family Justice Center should look like and to talk about some of the big questions. And I anticipate you're gonna ask me some of those in just a minute. How are we gonna pay for this? How are we gonna govern something like this? What do you do in one brick-and-mortar building when you have people who report to different bosses? How do you solve personnel issues? How do you make sure that victims are served in the best possible way by all of these organizations and make sure that you can keep the lights turned on? These are some of the big questions that we started really brainstorming about. And I will give you an update on where things stand post that two-day strategic planning. First of all, it was the considered consensus of everyone who was there that we want to proceed with a two-pronged strategy. The first is to open a temporary Family Justice Center within the next 12 months. The need is there now. The need to save lives is there now. And so, we are hopeful to open at a temporary location, somewhere in the Seventeenth Judicial District, a temporary Family Justice Center. The long-term goal, however, is to build. And that's to build a center that will meet all of the needs for all of these victims and give us room to grow and room to expand our services over time. Next slide. All right, I talked about the study. Next slide. Talked about strategic planning. Next slide. Oh, good, that's the end. So, some of the things that I would like respectfully you to take away from this presentation tonight is, first of all, the need for a Family Justice Center in Adams and Brumfield Counties. And importantly, the need for every municipality within Adams and Brumfield to be a part of it. And that requires buy-in at the political level from city councils, at the management level from your administration, and at the law enforcement level from your law enforcement agency. For the record, the Westminster City, the Westminster Police Department is one of the finest police departments in the state of Colorado. And we are so lucky. I feel fortunate that you all have built this terrific department. I feel fortunate to work with Chief Hubbard, who's...
Straight back.
No, who's just a terrific law enforcement leader. And as Chief Deputy Fritz said, has been a partner on the DVHRT team from the beginning and has been invested in the concept of a Family Justice Center as well. What we're hoping is that you all will invest in this as well, not just with the... Although, that's part of the conversation. But with your advocacy in the community for why this is important. We are hoping to start, like I said, small with a temporary facility. And one of the things that we discussed at the strategic planning with your former city manager and that I know city manager Andrews has been briefed on, although I look forward to a one-on-one with you on it soon, is hiring a project manager for this project that would work at the DA's office, but that we would fund now with contributions from all the municipalities. And that's something that I don't have a formal proposal for yet tonight, but want to just float out there as the building block for an eventual Family Justice Center. We gotta get somebody who can work on this full-time. I'm working on it a lot. Chief Deputy Fritz is working on it a lot. But I supervise a staff of 240 people. She supervises 11 people and has a full caseload. So, we need someone full-time. And I think this would be a good starting place for all of us in this collaboration on this project to invest and then see what we can do. That's our presentation. Respectful of your time. I appreciate the opportunity to present this to you and I would be delighted to take any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. Counselor Demont?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for being here, DA Mason. I have a couple of questions and then a couple of things that I would say. One, I would hope that the former city manager and manager Andrews has somewhat of a placeholder for this going into our budget discussions. I imagine that we have somewhat of a blueprint since we went through this process, as you mentioned, in Jefferson County, which I was lucky enough to be here through that. Some of the organizations that you mentioned, I know that we, many of us partner with personally, but also as a city such as Ralston House. And one of the things that you didn't really hit on that I want to at least mention why this is important in my mind is there's also those downstream effects of keeping the children out of the cycle. And all the people I know personally, as well as just, you know, case studies that I've seen where folks who are in homes with domestic violence often get abused themselves and then end up with substance abuse or end up abusers themselves because that's what they've seen. So, there's some of that. And I don't know if you have data around it. I would love to know if you do at some point. But I think that it's just one of the reasons why I personally advocate for these groups. And I'm pleased to see that you're doing this on the Adams County side of our city. It's always hard as a policymaker in a split-county city when one side gets something the other side doesn't and we try to balance that. So, another time that comes to mind is we did some lawyer services and that was one of the things like, okay, we'll do it in AdCo as long as we also do it for our folks in Jeffco. So, you know, I just wanted to mention those things because I think that they are part of the reason why I would support what you're asking, both with, you know, my own advocacy and any political capital I may have, as well as one of the voices on this body. And I appreciate the work that you're doing.
Thank you so much, Counselor Demont. And I 100% agree with what you said. And I will characterize it in this way. While the Family Justice Center provides services to victims and survivors, it is also a crime prevention organization. And I believe our community likes hearing when we are investing in not just prosecuting crime after it has happened, but investing in ways to prevent it from happening at all. And that's absolutely part of the Family Justice Center model.
Counselor Azadi?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, DA Mason, and Ms. Fritz for coming over here. Your presentation, as Counselor Demont just said, I agree with everything you just said. I think we do need a placeholder. I would be supportive of that in our budget process this year. And this is such an important topic. And as you said, DA, being proactive, right? I think we need to start shifting more attention and prioritization towards all the tactics that can prevent versus react to. And this is one of those things. So, I do have several questions for you and let me know if you don't have the answers yet. But the first one is related to criteria. So, what do you use to determine your resource allocation within the FJC? And how will you ensure that the most critical services are prioritized and accessible to those in need?
When you say resource allocation, are you talking about funding or are you talking about resources?
Yeah, so your budget, right? So, when you have your budget and you get started with the temporary piece, how will you actually allocate those resources? Because you have a lot of different services that you'll be providing.
So, when we're talking about our temporary location, the first thing that we are trying to do right now is identify sites. And the size of our temporary location will in many ways inform how many of our partners can co-locate there. And that will then inform the resources that we're able to provide to victims.
Yeah, that makes sense.
But it's also part of our dream, right? My dream is not to be confined to this temporary location. My dream, and it's a dream that was shared by everyone who's worked on this project so far, is to build something that will provide as many services as we possibly can.
And there's no estimates currently for what Phase 1, from a budget standpoint, could look like?
Well, we're working on that now. And it's possible that Westminster might even have a location for us to look at. I know we're gonna go visit a location that's been identified by Adams County next week. One of our nonprofit centers has offered up a space. The city of Brighton might have a space. Certainly, location is critical. The Adams County, my judicial district, of course, is both Adams and Brumfield. We have almost 700,000 residents. And it's big, goes from Brumfield all the way to Aurora. But the population center is really here. It's Westminster, North Glenn, Brumfield, and Thornton. So, I anticipate a push that I will be pushing for to have the location of our Family Justice Center closest to the population and closest to transportation. But we'll then have to brainstorm and figure out how do we serve victims who aren't close to us, such as the ones in Aurora or Commerce City or wherever. So, that again is part of the process we're going through now in identifying locations. And then, that will inform how many services we can provide right out of the gate.
Thank you for that, that makes sense. My next question is related to cultural competency. So, I assume that a big portion of the clientele will be of various diversities, whether it's cultural or ethnic or racial or age or, you know. How are you planning to ensure that the staff and the services are culturally relevant and competent towards the marginalized folks?
We've already started doing that. So, one of our earliest partners has been Servicio Estela Raza. And we've also... And we've also, what they formerly called the Asian Pacific Foundation, but they've since changed their name. We partner with them. We're also going to reach out to deaf to ensure that we're getting our deaf, reaching out to our deaf survivors. And so we do cross-training between all of these different groups. Servicios has helped us expand our training for officers so that they're being culturally competent when they go out on scene. And that would just continue on. It is a big piece of what we're doing. And we're also survivor-led. We have a survivors' community group that are helping lead this effort. And one big push that the survivors are pushing for is that we're culturally competent. And so it's something we're addressing from the ground up and will continue to expand on.
So you know, once you said Servicios, I knew, okay, that's the right part, and I loved them. And my last question is related to metrics. What metrics are you planning to use to measure your success?
I'm gonna give you a really lawyerly answer for that question. The truth is, some of these metrics are impossible to measure because we won't know when somebody has been saved. Because we don't, we know when they've been abused, and we know when they've been killed. But I certainly think that we can learn from family justice centers across the country as well as learn from our own data in terms of looking at case filings, calls, services, and getting victims to safety. And we'll have to have a robust conversation about how we measure that because I fully understand that city councils want to make sure that they're getting a return on their investment. But I will, just as level-set expectations, say, our goal is to save lives, literally. And sometimes that's hard to measure. It's easier to measure death and incidences of abuse.
I will say, our numbers will go up. I anticipate if we have a healthy family justice center and that we've marketed it to our community and individuals know where to go, and they will see an increase in reporting. And in some ways, it seems counterintuitive, but I think that would be a success if we saw an increase of reporting of domestic violence.
Because domestic violence is a significantly under-reporting crime. So when we see those numbers go up, that's actually a good thing. If it means we're getting people services that otherwise wouldn't have gotten them.
Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
I just want to thank you for taking this on. It's so very much needed. And, yeah, when you were talking about everything that you're doing and also just the experiences of folks, it definitely impacts me. I, you know, 30 years ago, when I was a teenager, I remember my mom had been pushed down the stairs by my stepfather, and he, you know, she had a miscarriage and she called the, which produced a miscarriage. But at the time, she called the police, and the police came and they said, well, if you weren't so hysterical, you wouldn't provoke him. And they, and there was no help. There was no sense of help. And, you know, I wonder about my entire teenage years where we moved like nine times trying to get out of situations and how my life could have been different had we had access to something like this. And I want to emphasize the need for training of officers to be able to be that first gateway into helping people understand where the help is. I would say, having experienced it for many, many years or watched it, you know, before my eyes, you don't feel like there's help. And you don't feel like there's a place to go, and especially if you've ever run into just any sort of resistance from those people who are supposed to be of service to you. So I, so for me, my questions kind of center around how, one, just what is your, what are your plans for just expanding training opportunities for police officers?
Well, I think, I'm actually really proud of the work we've done in Adams County. The training we've developed is four hours. We're now expanding it to six hours. We're doing one in the coming months, and we've invited Christine Futtusero, who's the head of forensic nursing, and she's gonna come in and do the strangulation TBI and sex assault piece of it. And we're opening it up to all the agencies. It's for Fed Heights, but we're opening it up to everyone who has new officers or just needs additional training. We have a space big enough to do that. Our office, we regularly have training for new detectives on how to approach these crimes. We have the sex assault response team that provides comprehensive sexual assault training countywide. And so there's a real push. Servicios de la Raza accompanies me to a lot of the trainings. Matt Nyheart does the training for the agency with me because I think it's important for patrol officers to hear from cops, because I'm just a lawyer or an advocate, and they take their own much more seriously. And so we work on the training together and really show that we're partnered and that these trauma-informed approaches work. And what we've seen is an increase in reporting. Our data does show when we go in and we've done the patrol level and we do it in small classes, we don't do a big roll call, we do it small so officers can engage us. We do see a rapid increase in filing, in particular on our strangulation cases, which means that the training is being internalized. And Servicios de la Raza has informed us anecdotally, they hear that their clients are being better treated by patrol across the board in Adams County, and so our reputation is really shifting.
And I just want to thank you for sharing what you shared. And I'm sorry for that lived experience, but it's valuable when any person in public life says what you just said, because domestic violence impacts so many people. And I do think and hope that what happened in your family doesn't happen as often anymore. But it does require, as you ask, training. And even when the day comes that we're all at a ribbon-cutting, and I really hope that day happens, the work will have, the work will just be beginning at that point. When we have transitions in leadership, when we have turnover in police departments, it requires starting over with training. And that's something that my office is certainly committed to, but will also be part of the DNA of a family justice center.
Okay. Just have a couple more questions. The, you had mentioned that you don't need, or victims wouldn't need to go through the police or the attorney's office. How would you, I mean, you were talking about, Ms. Fritz, that, you know, trying to get this out there in terms of people knowing about it, but how, how does that work? How would you capture people who are not reporting?
Yeah, I'll take the first crack at that, and then I'm sure she'll have more to add. A lot of this has been very strategic about branding. It's been strategic about messaging. The steering committee for the family justice center has voted on a model. There are different models for family justice centers across the country. The model they have chosen is that it would be agency-run, and the lead agency is the DA's office. So the FJC will be run by the DA's office. But I don't anticipate having a DA logo anywhere in that building. And I don't anticipate having a law enforcement logo on any window, out-facing window of that building. I'm not even sure we're gonna call it a family justice center, even that, even though that is the nomenclature that has been used for this movement, because the word "justice" scares some people. They hear the word "family justice center" and they think it's a courthouse. So that's why Porchlight came up with their name. And we've seen some organizations that call themselves the Family Peace Center, whatever it may be. So we will have to collectively, as a community and as stakeholders, figure out what we want to call our version of the family justice center and then get the word out without it, the story being, this is the DA's family justice center. We may be the effort, but this is gonna be the community's family justice center. And we have to be very strategic and intentional about how we message that.
I would just say it's something we're really mindful of. And when we are creating our work groups, one is marketing and getting the word out there for folks to know that we exist.
I would be happy to help in that, in whatever way I can. I would just, the two last questions I have, one is in terms of, I would, you know, love for Westminster to be able to help leverage sites or opportunities that are next to transit in particular. I know you were talking about how it takes so much longer to go by transit, but that's also because if the locations aren't very accessible. So I'd love to see something, you know, whether it's a city-owned property that we might be able to leverage for a new building, or, you know, we have random buildings like the CDOT building or it's over by 88th and Sheridan, you know, in terms of how do we take something that's an asset that we're not quite using to its maximum and be able to use that for a facility like this, whether temporary or long-term? I just really want it to be near, a good transit, a high-volume transit. So Sheridan and Park and Ride, I'm sorry, the Sheridan Bus Station or Wagon Road would be a great one because that's, kind of captures a lot of, I know, I'm very, I get into the solution. But I would love for us to be able to maximize transit access. And my, I guess my last question is, are there grants that we can access to help fund the, you know, the new building or?
There are. In fact, the DVHRT was started with a grant. We all collectively, and I'm sure some of you probably signed on to letters for this, lobbied our congressional delegation for this $2 million burn grant from the Department of Justice. That was my first year in office. And secured it. And that $2 million has funded the building blocks of the DVHRT, FTEs of the DA's office, FTEs at multiple nonprofit stakeholders, and then funding for housing and other things for victims. There's lots of grant money out there. We have to get some of our, some of our legal stuff down in order to apply for some of those grants, but it's very much part of this process. And candidly, the funding question is a big part of this. How are we gonna fund it? And I think it's, will have to be a mixed model of public funding and private funding and grant funding.
Thank you. Well, like Counselor Demont, I do, I do look forward to seeing how we might put some money aside, but also, you know, maybe it doesn't have to be money and it could be land or something. So just to be thinking strategically.
And I've been in touch with your chief of police, of course, and look forward to talking to my colleague and friend, Manager Andrews. I think the first ask is gonna be relatively small. An FTE for a project manager, we want to get someone who's experienced and qualified in this field. It's probably $160,000. And so that divided by all the municipalities is not ultimately gonna be a huge number. But it is just the start. At some point, we will want the city and all of our cities to invest more.
Thank you.
Counselor Hart? Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much for being here. And I also want to thank Mayor Protem for sharing her story. I am really glad that you are offering training to our officers. I think that's really important. My question is, have you or are you also using mental health coresponders?
Well, actually, Reaching Hope came and participated in one of the Westminster trainings. But as far as co-responing on scene, that is not our model. I think that's up to municipalities on how they engage with coresponders. But we do engage with them in forming the training, how to run a trauma-informed interview, what are the different reactions to trauma, and how to recognize it when they are out on scene as well.
I'll just add that I'm a huge proponent of the co-responder model. I think it's a really important way for us to address folks with mental health problems and not just a one-size-fits-all law enforcement response. For domestic violence, we have to look at what is the most likely way to help that victim or survivor be safe? And if that involves co-responder, then that's part of the equation, but it may not always be.
Thank you. I do think that funding for something like this is very, very important. Like you've already stated, too often, children whose parents are survivors don't survive. I'm, like Mayor Protem, I'm a survivor of domestic violence. It was in Adams County, actually. My mom was the one who called the police. I did not want to involve the police because I was afraid of, I was afraid of him and his family's response to that, which was valid. But I didn't have a choice on whether to press charges because I was a minor and I had visible bruises on my face, and so it was, you know, obvious. And I actually was in labor when I went through talking to a victim's advocate and, you know, what you have to do in Adams County. It would have been really, really helpful, being so young, having a mental health co-responder there. You know, I didn't want to press charges because I was afraid, but having somebody like that being able to talk to me might have changed some things. And then, at the time, I was already on WIC. My mom was already on food stamps. But it would have really been, I'm so glad that, you know, you talked about counseling because that would have been huge. Like Mayor Protem, I personally didn't have any follow-up afterwards, and I did end up going back. And I truly believe that had I not left when I did, that I wouldn't be here today because he did threaten my life. And there were times he strangled me until I passed out. And so if I would have had somebody, whether a counselor or somebody to follow up with me, I may not have gone back. And it was watching my three-year-old, or three-month-old son as he was screaming at the top of his lungs, sleep peacefully through what was happening, I knew that we needed to get out because that was not right. A baby shouldn't be sleeping through that, you know, violent chaos. And so I am lucky that I got out, and I'm lucky that I survived. But I, I think that if I would have had a little bit more support, being so young, maybe I wouldn't have gone back. And so I am, this funding is so important, it's those children, you know? Had I, had I not gotten out, you know, my son, there's a chance they, he wouldn't have a mother today. And there are children out there, you know, who are unfortunately living that reality. And so I do think the funding is so, so important. I do think this is also between, you know, my experience and Mayor Protem's experience shows why it's so important to have people who have these kind of experiences in this role. And I am just so grateful that the people in Adams County, because like I said, I was in Adams County when this happened, I'm so grateful that the people who will be going, who are going through this, that they will have more support and better outcome than I did. And so I'm very, very grateful for your work on this because it's so, so important. And I'm so glad that survivors will have a better experience than I did. So thank you so much.
Counselor Hart, I'm grateful to you for sharing that. And as I said to your colleague, it's another reminder of just how pervasive domestic violence is. And it is without question one of our goals with this family justice center to help prevent other people from going through the experience that you went through. And I will also share with all of you that we are, after this meeting later this week, we'll send out an email to all of you, I think we have all of your email addresses, with just a little follow-up and also some links for you to sign up to participate, should you wish, whether that be in our survivor-led working group or we have working groups on facility, working groups on really everything we need to plan the family justice center. And many of your fellow elected city councilors from across the community have already signed up for some of those working groups, and we would be honored to have some of you sign up as well.
Counselor Ireland?
Thank you. I think it's a good cause, and I appreciate what was shared. I mean, I, it's sad, it's so pervasive in our society. I do have questions, though, for the taxpayers. So what are, we're the only ones that buy into this? Do we end up paying for all of it?
Well, I can tell you with great confidence, Counselor, that you won't be the only one buying in.
Who else, has anyone bought into it yet?
Yeah. Essentially, every jurisdiction within the state.
Are we the only ones that haven't voted on it?
Well, we haven't asked anybody to vote yet. Because I haven't presented... Well, we haven't asked anybody to vote yet, because I haven't presented anybody with a dollar figure. But we have commitments from Thornton, we have commitments from Brighton, we have commitments from Bloomfield, we have commitments, we haven't done our show yet to Aurora, we've got Northland on board, Northland almost had a facility that would have worked for us. There is, I'm tremendously gratified by the consensus that we have seen and worked to build for this project. So I can, there are no guarantees in politics, but I can pretty much guarantee you Westminster will not be the only municipality that's on board with this project.
Okay. Well, I want numbers before I approve. And I also want to know who else is buying in, because I don't want our citizens to pay for it all.
I understand that. That's a worthy question.
Thank you.
Counselor Camelia.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your presentation and for your patience. I just want to acknowledge, as everyone else has emphasized, that the need is there now. And so I'm extremely grateful to you for working to meet that need, because this is outside of your working hours, and you're putting all of this on your plate additionally. So thank you. And I just want to acknowledge that as a project manager, I recognize the investment there. So thank you, and pay them well. And I also just want to say that I love hearing that you're survivor-led. My family could have used a center like this last year, just as probably could have almost any woman at some time in her life that you've met. And I also want to acknowledge the downstream effects that were mentioned. This effort saves lives, and it also saves dollars, because these victims become contributing members of society. And I've spent a lot of time, you know, looking up trauma-informed numbers, and it does help preventative measures do help our economy ultimately. And then you mentioned outreach. How would you like folks to contact you once we begin our advocacy?
So we have an updated link on our website. It's a bit of a clunky www.adamsbloomfieldda.org. And if you click on the domestic violence tab, it then has a new link for our Family Justice Center planning. We'll also, like I said, send out an email to all of you, which you can forward as you wish. And we are in the process of creating a newsletter that will give regular updates to the community on this process. So the first place would be to go to the website, but we will have multiple ways for people to sign up and to be involved.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. I always look forward to whatever the topic is you're going to share. I have witnessed with my grandson, he's a first-year patrol officer, and his first two weeks, he dealt with human trafficking. He's dealt with multiple domestic violence, and says that's the most scary call to go on, because you just don't know. And sometimes there's relatives all involved with different scenarios, and that gets even scarier. And this week, he talked a young woman off the roof instead of jumping to suicide. So the training is critical. It's just critical. And so I applaud you for doing that and expanding it, because these young officers walk into things the first time. And when you're shorthanded anyway, and having to wait for backup, it just becomes scary. So I thank you for everything you're doing, and I'm 100% behind whatever you guys are needing.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I'm tremendously grateful for your support of this project, and the work that the DA's office does in partnership with the Westminster Police Department to keep this community safe. So it's an honor to see and speak with all of you. Thank you for the time and for your terrific questions.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The public comment portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to communicate with the City Council. Each participant will give, be given, is it going to be three minutes tonight? Three minutes on any topic they choose. Public comment is not intended to be a back-and-forth discussion. This evening, the clerk has informed me that we received three emails, zero voicemails by the deadline, which have been transcribed and posted to the online agenda packet and forwarded directly to City Council. City Clerk, would you please call our first person? The first speaker is Elise Jarvis. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor McNally, Members of Council, and Mr. Andrews. My name is Elise Jarvis, and I'm speaking on behalf of Dino Valente, who was unable to be here this evening, but wanted his voice heard on the issue of awards. Thank you for the opportunity to serve on the City Ward Advisory Committee. The process was certainly compressed in terms of time due to the pressing deadline of the ballot. Maybe that was the plan all along. I enjoy giving my time to public service, but not when the thoughtful time of the committee members is cast aside by personal and political agendas. The notion of awards has always been contentious in Westminster. Taking an approach of having a fantastic facilitator such as Pam Anderson and community members involved was welcomed. We worked diligently, pointedly, collaboratively, and ultimately presented you with three options. You spent time in study session reviewing all of those options, and came around the option you thought was best. You directed your legal team to draft language for a potential ordinance and ballot question. Imagine the surprise of the community when, in the middle of the meeting, after motions were made, people had left the meeting, you did a complete change and went a wholly different direction, including the necessity of calling a public meeting to meet the ballot deadline. Why the change? Why the rush to the ballot? You certainly have the right, as the policymaking arm of the city, to have made these decisions, but they stink almost as badly as your ill-fated single-hauling plan that some of your friends and predecessors insisted was the only way Westminster should operate. Moving forward with this new idea you created last week, you are endorsing a plan that not only defeats the ideas of geographic balance and equity within the city, but you are offering a system that potentially concentrates a supermajority in one spot of the city. With such a rapid change and poor communication to the city, you should not move forward with a 2024 ballot plan, but continue to work and host focus groups, different stakeholder groups, and look towards a 2025 ballot question. You have just heard thousands of hours of commentary concerning an off-leash dog park. Imagine being a member of the Westminster Dog Guardians, who have deeply passionate beliefs about how they want sections of the community to function, but who have a council supermajority all in one small chunk of the city that does not share the same vision. The outcome would look markedly different, and the ability to recall most would be nonexistent. This is not governance, this is tyranny. I encourage you that with the change, don't rush into, put the issue to the ballot in 2025. Besides, if you are in a rush for ballot issues, why are you not putting forth the suggested fire department funding sales tax that would bring additional needed first responder personnel to our city? Upgrade edge facilities to expand the resources. While I believe the funding should occur without a sales tax expanding first responders to help the community is something I will get behind. Should you continue to move this changed government expansion issue forward for 2024, I, along with others on the committee, will vocal in opposition. Thank you, Dino.
Thank you. The next speaker is Bill Christopher.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor McNally, Members of City Council, and interim City Manager Andrews. I'm Bill Christopher, and I'm here to speak about the ward system ballot language. It's very upsetting to have come before you this evening with mistrust and backdoor lobbying having gone on in the last 10 days. I thought the wards advisory committee had done a solid job in recommending three options to you for the wards configuration. While you selected the option using a seven-member city council with three wards and two council members from each ward, you got lobbied by someone on the wards advisory committee, which is pretty poor conduct, in my opinion. Now, you are poised to approve ballot language for a nine-member city council. What's the justification for two more city council members? How many times has this council, or the previous council, been approached by citizens via a petition, or people coming here and speaking at this podium, in an attempt to sway you into adding two more council members to the dais? The answer is none. So I think it begs the question, why are you so anxious to implement a ballot language for a nine-member city council? If you stay with the nine-member city council configuration for the ballot, you will have set a self-defeating scenario. The majority of Westminster citizens do not want more governance, more cost, or more bureaucracy. They want better communications from their city council members, and more locally, like in their ward, interaction and awareness. Please return to the original ballot proposal and adopt it. Otherwise, we will have a battle over the ward system. By putting forth the nine-member city council configuration, you are setting up defeat of the whole wards concept and the previous effort that some of us have been laboring over for the past five years. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Tom Jurgens.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I was on the wards committee, and three recommended options were provided by the committee. All of these options reflected the will of the voters to adopt a ward system of representation. The voters expressed their preference almost a year ago. The committee also determined that the difference in cost of governance by seven versus nine-member city coun, by a seven versus a nine-member city council was very, very small, border gun and consequential. I recommend that the mayor and city council approve one of the committee recommendations tonight, not tomorrow, not next week, not next month. Do not delay and push this decision a year more or more into the future. Our citizens deserve governance. Governance, it gets things done. Please decide tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is John Palmer.
Good evening. Couple of things. I'd like to start off with the Resolution 21 you passed last week. Again, I am demanding to know what meeting, what public meeting that was discussed at. I was told that it was at a heat-building exercise. If there were more than three counselors there, it needed to be recorded, or there needs to be minutes. I will be doing a core request to get to the bottom of that. Until such time, I don't believe that this three minutes versus five minutes is legal. Furthermore, if you're going to restrict the people to talk to three minutes, I think a few of you need to take the same approach, and not babble on, we don't want to hear your life stories, et cetera, et cetera. If you want me to name names, I'd be more than happy to. But we don't come here to hear your problems. We come here to speak so you can hear what the citizens want, the people that elected you. Again, the three minutes versus five minutes, I will be doing core requests to get that information. I will also be requesting emails and texts corresponding to that with any of you. Furthermore, if you're going to enforce that, how come we're not enforcing the first part of that order, 2-1, where there's a order of business, totally different, you passed this last week. It doesn't match the agenda for this evening. How is that? We can play it one way, but not the other? Not right. There's a problem here. Your people are making decisions and not using your heads. Next, I'd like to talk about the wards. I would concur with Bill Christopher. I don't know what backroom deals were swung between Anita and you folks. There again, I will be doing core requests for any emails, phone conversations, or texts between any and all of you and Ms. Sykes. That was backroom deal. First off, she shouldn't have been on that committee. That was a conflict of interest. I don't know why that wasn't addressed in the beginning, her being a former mayor and former counselor. Conflict of interest. And then for her to go behind the backs of all of the other six members on that committee, and recommend something totally different to you folks, the mayor, you admitted to talking to her, Dave, you said you talked to somebody on the committee, obviously that was Anita, as did you, Ms. Sykes, or excuse me, Mr. Mala, you all talked to her. You're making deals out of the public view. You came up with a plan, three wards, two counselors from each, and a mayor at large. Nothing about expanding the council until you all talked to Anita. We don't have room at this dais for more people. We don't need to spend another million dollars to expand this dais. We don't need to expand that room. We've lived with seven for many, many years, in fact, since the start of the charter in 1959. This is nonsense. I'm afraid that it's going to be a fight, and it's going to lose, because people are not going to buy that, they're not going to vote for it. There's already people in the community that are willing to put money up against this, to have it turned down. I'll be supporting them, not supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the last public speaker. Let's take a five-minute break, because I don't know how long the next piece is going to take. to take.
I don't know if it would or not, but letting the voters decide whether or not that is true makes much more sense than the seven of us making sure that that's true. So I don't think I can support it together, as I had stated last week. However, if we go forward with what we had approved that Ms. Anderson and Mr. Munch had shown us in the first place, and then have that second additional question just as laid out here tonight, as a separate question in 2025, everything moves ahead as it's written tonight. However, you know, we allow the voters to say, yeah, those are both two things that we want. So that would be my suggestion.
Counselor Azadi?
Can I just ask for clarification? What were the two questions? What's the first question and second question?
The first question is the one that we got asked last week, which would be the three wards with offsetting members that would start in 2025 if passed. And then the second question would be, at that same election, would be asked, do we want to add two at-large members? And then if they say yes, then it would be rolled out just as it is in tonight's agenda memo in 2027, where two of them would be elected, one in a two-year term and one in a four-year term.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I wholeheartedly think that's a great idea, and we should do that. I would like to make a few comments as to why. So I sent counsel an email earlier today saying that I would like to, that I'm going to ask for this motion to reconsider. As I stated last week, it's really critical for me that we provide inclusive, equitable attention and prioritization across the entire city. And what is missing right now, for me, and has been missing for decades, in my opinion, is attention to the southern part of our city. And the one, one great way of doing that, of leveling, of leveling that playing field, is to give equal weight in terms of council representation. And that's why I've wanted wards for years. And that's why I fought for awards, for the all-wards, when we heard from the advisory committee. And by the way, that committee is, as I've stated in the past, did a great job. Everyone here tonight and prior have, has talked about how well they collaborated. We need to do justice to the fact that we had that anchor give us recommendations. We shouldn't just throw away what they, what the intent was. And that, I'm not saying that that's what this would do, the hybrid, but what I'm saying is, we took their recommendations, we made a decision to go all-wards, and then we changed our minds. And the hybrid, there are, there are great benefits. And I wrote down here a few points as to what the three benefits are of hybrid, but the fact that the all-wards is actually better, I, I would like to just lay that out right now, as to how all-ward system works really well. And to Counselor Demott's point, this new compromise, I think, separating the questions, is probably the right way to go, right? That's, that feels right to, to me. So I love that suggestion. The first benefit of a hybrid is supposed to be citywide representation. So you'll hear that a lot, right? With that, well, a councilor that's at-large will have citywide representation. However, an all-ward structure allows for local representation, which I believe has been the missing piece for historic Westminster for decades. If you look at who gets, who actually gets elected to this council, very few have come from that area. And it's not a coincidence that very few resources have been allocated to that area as a result, because they don't have a voice on here that speaks for them. So that's one. The second benefit you'll hear about hybrid is that it's flexible, so it offers local and citywide concerns. However, an all-ward structure provides clearer accountability, which is also one of the gaps right now. It gives us the ability to have more responsibility to specific communities. And like I said, southern part of the city needs the attention. They are disproportionately black and brown, they are disproportionately older, they are disproportionately lower in fixed income. That requires more attention when you have that situation. And that's why I'm focusing, focusing so much on this. And the last benefit you'll hear about hybrids is that it reduces the risk of tribalism, right? Because it allows a mix of voices. However, an all-ward structure is actually better for equity, because each area would have equal representation. That eliminates the dilution of voices, because when we add the two, if we were to do the original, which is, you know, what we had talked about tonight, we would be adding two at-large, growing council from seven to nine. Those extra voices would dilute those voices of the two from historic Westminster, which would eliminate the benefit, in, in, in my opinion, of having wards in the first place. So with all that said, I, I want to back and support Counselor Demott's suggestion of separating the two, if that's not going to lead to a delay. I, I heard that it's not. So, because the last thing we want, the last thing that I would never vote for is to push this off, right? We need to do something, and we need to do it now. And I think this is a great compromise.
Counselor Hott?
Yes. So I, I disagree. Honestly, I think it would have been better had we voted for what was on the agenda and had that not passed, brought last week's back up. I, I always wanted a hybrid model. And the committee brought us two hybrid options. They brought us one option that wasn't a hybrid. One option was four wards, one counselor in each of the four wards, two at-large, and the mayor, keeping it at seven. And the reason why I liked the nine council model is because I thought that Counselor Demott made a very good observation about how important it is that wards, if, if we only have one, there would be times that wards, the representation would be a counselor who's brand-new and still learning, so that we, there'd always be somebody with experience in that ward. And the, the, I, I've had lots of conversations with more than one person who preferred a hybrid model. There were quite a few people actually at the volunteer dinner that I talked to residents, asking what they thought about a hybrid model with nine, and I got really good responses to that. And the supermajority, we already have a supermajority at-large. Five of us are in Jefferson County. Westminster is approximately a third Jefferson County and two-thirds Adams County. So we already have five counselors, and we have three counselors below 104th that live near Wadsworth. So we already, and we have very different opinions. Sometimes we agree. Sometimes I agree with people on the same political side as me, and sometimes I, I agree with people on the opposite political side of me. We all have our own thoughts. And so the, the supermajority is already happening with an at-large system. But I, I truly believe that a hybrid model offers balance. And I want to, again, reiterate, this, this, you know, nine-member model that we're talking about was brought to us by the committee. The committee brought us two hybrid models and one non-hybrid model. And when they brought us the model to, there was actually talks of increasing to 11, which I think is too many. But when we were brought this option of expanding council to nine, it was never talked about as, as breaking it up into two different votes. So I'm disappointed, because I thought we made a decision last week, and it feels like we're flip-flopping. And that makes me really uncomfortable. I, I would have much rather voted on what we were here to vote on, and had that not passed, brought last week's back. But I am, I am not, not in favor of last week's ordinance. So, thank you.
Counselor Ireland?
So I raised questions at the beginning. I'm willing to compromise going along with Counselor Demott and Counselor Azadi, to have two questions, let the voters decide. But in the end, what we have now, a supermajority in Jefferson County, is what I'm trying to avoid by having two from each ward. And they alternate, so there's always someone that knows what's going on. And also, the 5% is what I would hope for, for the citizens. So we're not moving the wards to fit our political agenda, and that's why I wanted 5%. And we never really voted on that. I pretty much know how it would turn out, but we didn't vote on it after it was seconded. But I will go along with Counselor Azadi and Counselor Demott have two questions for the citizens to decide.
Counselor Carmelia?
Thank you. I want to say that we are all working really hard to find that sweet spot of what the right model is for the city. And I think that that's the messiness that you're seeing up here. We're working really hard to figure out what that is. And I, I've heard more than one time over the last two weeks, that doesn't exist, or else all the cities would already have implemented that perfect model, whatever that is, it would exist, and we wouldn't all have different versions everywhere. So I think that it's good that we're trying so hard to figure out what the right balance is. I want to give a major applause to Counselor Demott. I think the suggestion hits the nail on the head, because it addresses the contentious part of the question, and it allows the voters to decide that piece. I like that it brings it back to the voters. And I've mentioned that before in my comments, that, you know, if we can't figure it out, let's bring it to the voters. So I appreciate it. I think that it truly hits the nail on the head, and I'm all for it. Thank you.
Mayor Potem?
So as I have expressed, when we first were going over the options, and even before, I do also want to see a hybrid composition to the council. I do believe that it provides us with the most successful composition in terms of representation, but also the ability to move forward with citywide concerns. And in communities that are just wards, they can have trouble coalescing on more citywide decisions. And that can create a stagnant. And it is, I've seen it play out. You know, I'm from St. Louis area, and their council has epically struggled for many years as a, just a district system to get things done. And so that's always been on my mind, actually, even before I ever thought to get onto a council. It's like, why is this council not working? And so I, you know, I, I understand that folks have a reticence to expand the council to nine members. I think it's just not been done recently in our, in, in our experience. And I'm, I'm never afraid of change, but I, I understand that for people who, you know, have been used to this seven-member body, it would definitely be a, a switch. I, too, can get behind what Counselor Demott is proposing. I'm not in love with just going straight to the ward system immediately, because I, again, I'm like Counselor Hott, want to see hybrid implemented more, or, you know, just for sure implemented. But I appreciate that, that folks need to have, or need to feel like, you know, they've had their voice in on this, too. So I think it's a good compromise. Yeah, that's where I'm at.
For me, going to nine, sitting as mayor, it means two more personalities. It means, will people come prepared to the meetings? It means, when we have deadlines, is the mayor calling you at Sunday evening for one of your most important jobs? And have you gotten it done yet, so that things can get put together? I haven't seen that in the last three years. And so it's hard to say, oh, let's just expand, because it'll be so much better. Maybe for individuals, it will be great. For the mayor, not so much. I'm willing to get the Bill 26 on the agenda for next, for this ballot. I'm not committing to anything past that, because I don't believe, right now, that, well, first of all, I have no reason for even supporting wards, because I've, I've worked with people from the South who got elected and turned out to be some of our best counselors. So I've been there, and I know from other cities, you're going to have a ward that you can't get people. Why should they do anything? Because after the election, they can just put in their name to be appointed. So those are the goods and the bads, but we need something on this ballot for the residents. I was totally shocked that we totally flipped last week and went to something else. And I just think we need to get back to what we originally decided. Let the people vote on that, and what happens past that is, is the next step. So.
Counselor Carmelia?
Thank you. I just want to make sure that we do end up having some motion to address the second half of the question.
Let's take care of this one first, correct?
Correct. So if I could, Mayor, the motion that's pending right now is to reconsider the August 12th vote on Counselors' Bill 26. If this motion passes, the old vote is canceled, and essentially, there'll be a new debate for council on what to do with Counselors' Bill 26. So that, that would be your next step. So I would suggest a roll call.
Roll call.
We're voting on, can you please start? Clarify one more time. What exactly are we voting on?
This is a motion to reconsider the August 12th vote denying Counselors' Bill 26. If this passes, council will then have to take up what to do with Counselors' Bill 26, starting over on Counselors' Bill 26, which was last Monday's agenda item.
So are we denying three wards, three, I mean, two at each, two of each? Is that what we're voting on, to deny that? Or are we voting for it?
Apologies, Counselor. So what is pending before City Council right now is a motion to reconsider its denial of Counselors' Bill 26. If this passes, the next step will be for council to vote on Counselors' Bill 26 anew. So you will have a new opportunity to vote on Counselors' Bill 26 if this passes.
If I may, and just to clarify, because I think I'm hearing some of the angst, then, because it wouldn't be an official thing for the second part of what I'm proposing, the majority, which you've already heard the majority basically give direction, but we could then give direction for that question to be drafted for next year's election. And that would give them plenty of time to do so. Is that proper and all above board?
Absolutely, Counselor. So you'll, you have a year to think about what will be on the 2025 ballot. So yes, there's plenty of time to craft language for the 2025 ballot, if there's a desire to propose a question to the voters then, which would add two at-large seats to this body.
But, and I appreciate that, because I think that when you give that, I'm glad that you'll have plenty of time to do it right. But we also, as a majority, can say, we're giving that direction now, so that, that work starts, and it's already in the queue for said election.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Let me just, one more time. A yes vote is to bring it back.
So a yes vote is to reconsider council's vote on Counselors' Bill 26. So if this passes, you will have a chance now to take up Counselors' Bill 26 and vote it.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Counselor Carmelia? Yes. Counselor Demott?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hott?
No.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Romella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
Okay, so now we have Counselors' Bill number 26 before us again?
We, we do. And it is as if next, last Monday's vote did not happen. So Counselors' Bill 26, which was posted on your agenda last week, would place ballot language for the November election of 2024, creating three wards, two elected officials per ward, one mayor remaining at-large. The two ward seats are staggered, four-year terms. And this was published in last week's agenda, and it does contain a reference in it to a 10% variance between wards. And I, I would ask that we address this, because there may be some interest in exploring that 10% requirement. And I do appreciate that both Ms. Anderson and Mr. Munch are in the room, because I think one thing that came out last week was the idea of the 10% figure versus a 5% figure. And there's another important difference that I want to make sure gets explored tonight, which is, are you comparing your population of one ward against another ward? Or are you comparing your ward against an ideal hypothetical ward, which would be, in this case, I think, 1/3 of the population? So the math on that produces some interesting results. And I think maybe Mr. Munch and Ms. Anderson both have some information that could be beneficial for your discussion.
Welcome.
Assistant City Attorney Matthew Munch, I apologize for jumping the gun, but I anticipate you might want to hear this. I believe we spoke last week, but I think it's worth repeating, that as currently written, this provides for a 10% deviation that no ward can differ from any other ward by 10%, or by more than 10%. That is a little bit different from what you heard in public comment, which suggested a idealized, that you cannot deviate 5% from an idealized population difference, which essentially be exactly 1/3 of the population of the city. You could go 5% up from that, you could go 5% low, below that. The way we have it written is you cannot vary 10% the highest to the lowest. So the, I don't have the exact numbers, but it is, it is very, very close to the same thing. And I'm not saying that it is the, the same thing. It's a little bit more economically worded this way. We don't have, we did not choose to define the idealized statistical ward, and then have reference to that. Instead, each ward, these three of them, just can't be more than 10% apart. Were you to adopt a reference to a 5% ward, you could have two wards very close to 10% apart under that structure. There's, I don't see any reason you couldn't, if you chose, change this to say that the no ward can differ from any other ward by more than 5%. I would simply point out that that would be the tightest percentage of any homeroom municipality in the state of Colorado. That would give the narrowest amount of room for anybody to make any moves when districting or redistricting. Not if you have anything to say about how that works in the real world. I'm a lawyer, I don't work in the real world.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, City Council tonight, Pam Anderson. I really appreciate that intro, Matt, because it is how it works in the, in the real world. I think, as we discussed in our study session, one of the things that's difficult to do is, is predict where those lines need to be. We have all those principles and factors we need to consider. With, and I agreed with the previous commenter from last week, population really being a very primary factor, and that's where that, as close to equal population issue can get. You don't often see municipalities putting this in their code, and here's the reason. So you start looking at all of those different factors. You want to provide yourself enough room in order not to be detrimental or create division unnecessarily. And so those things that we're considering, and why I advocate for the, the 10%, is the 5% is more typically at the legislative or congressional level. That's because we're talking about numbers. A legislative district, a senate district is around 160,000, which is far larger than your municipality. A house district is somewhere just under 90,000, which is almost the same size. And so when you're carving up, you know, a smaller jurisdiction, that number gets pretty close. And another factor we're considering are neighborhoods. So, you know, what's the average size of your neighborhoods? And existing lines, which would be precincts. Precincts are anywhere from 1,500, and it could be as large as 2,500. And so that 10% gives us some leeway. But of course, the legal test would be, we are hoping for, we're aiming for that ideal. We just need to provide enough flexibility in order not to inadvertently constrict some of those other factors.
If I may. As you mentioned, most homeroom municipalities-
We need you closer to the mic.
I'm sorry. Most homeroom municipalities in the state of Colorado do not provide a specific number. They simply have language that we have as well, to the effect that the districts are to be as close in population as possible, compact and contiguous. Those that do have the number, the, the tightest of them, I believe, I'd have to check my notes, but the tightest of them is a 5% deviation from a idealized population, which is very similar to what you have in front of you right now. Our 10% for each ward to another is pretty similar in terms of the numbers to a 5% deviation from an idealized population. It's just a little more easily phrased. If you were to put this in, that 5% no ward from any other ward by 5%, you would really be the equivalent of about, closer to 2.5% deviation from an idealized population. And as I said, that would be the tightest in the state. But there's many reasons it would be unlawful.
Counselor Demott?
I don't have questions. I wanted to make the motion, so.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your explanation. I still would like 5%, but I know my colleagues want 10, so I'll go along with it.
Counselor Demott?
One quick question before we get to the motion. The gentleman stopped and talked to you who brought that up, and I believe we got an email that, your explanation, did that seem like that cleared things up or changed his perspective?
Oh, I, I would, I would hesitate to interpret his email for him. But yes, we, we discussed before he left, because he-
It seemed like it was different than what he thought from my reading, so I didn't know what conversation you had.
I, I believe we were on the same page by the time he left. I believe he, I think he still may not know, I think he agreed that the numbers were in fact tighter than they at first glance appeared to be, based on the fact that 10% deviation from an idealized statistical population is awfully close to 5% ward to ward. I, I believe that he had, I believe we cleared that up-
Great. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Ready for the next thing, if nobody else has questions?
Is there anything else we have to do with 26?
No, just a suggestive motion. And if it gets seconded, then you can debate Counselors' Bill 26.
So I'm going to just read it off the last week's script. So moved to pass Counselor Bill number 26 on first reading, adopting ballot language to Midwestminster Charter regarding the election of the city councilors by geographic wards.
Mayor Potem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pass Counselors' Bill number 26. Any further discussion? Counselor Carmelia?
Yes, thank you so much. I will end up voting to pass Counselors' Bill number 26 with the intention of directing city staff, as we discussed, to add those two extra seats to next year's ballot. And the reason I do so is because ultimately, I do believe, with all the information I have collected, that a hybrid approach is the right model. And I understand that expanding the council itself could be seen as a separate question. And so I want to ensure that the residents have the chance to make their voices heard around this concern. And I also understand why it could be contentious for different reasons. Ultimately, I do believe that a nine-member council will likely be the best way to represent a city of our size. We have seen nine and even 11-member councils in neighboring cities of equal, of relatively equal size to ours. And I think that we end up being familiar and afraid of change. So I just want to say that I hope that voters come around to this idea. And I really do hope that ultimately, we end up with a hybrid model, because I do believe it's in the best interest of the city. That said- That said, I want to ensure that the residents get the chance to vote on what they asked for, which is wards. So let's make sure that we get that question on the ballot this year.
Mayor Potem?
I, too, would like to see a hybrid, as I've mentioned before, model. And so that's why I am going to vote no on this, because I still want to just demonstrate that I would like to see a hybrid model. But I do appreciate the willingness to move forward and add an additional question next year on, you know, having the residents decide on the extra two. So there you go. Thanks.
Counselor Hot?
Yes, along with Mayor Potem, I will also be voting no. I think that Counselors' Bill Number 27 is more balanced, and I think that is, I would rather see that. And I would rather make sure that we have a balanced representation, having something hybrid as well.
Counselor Demond?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to my colleagues for the discussion. I think, to me, I initially supported Counselor Bill 26. My move to go to this other way was in effort for compromise. And I think that there are plenty of folks who believe hybrid is the right way to go in growing the council's right. However, I think that allowing the voters to make that decision makes perfect sense to me. And the thing that I like about it, that I was hoping the majority, the supermajority, quite frankly, would have liked, is the fact that this gives the voters the opportunity to first vote on wards, then vote on the second piece of this, which really rolls out Counselor Bill 27 if we were to have voted on it the exact same way functionally. So it just allows the voters to be the ones to decide that that's the way it's going to go. So it allows them to separate it, which is one of the things I have heard from constituents I've talked to, that they didn't think that the whole thing should be one package. So I appreciate the willingness of council to compromise and to move something forward to the ballot. This is a question that has been talked about in the 10 years I've been involved, so I'm glad to see something forward for the voters to decide whether or not they want this form of government.
Counselor Azadi?
Just want to concur that, you know, I think I've stated my points already, but the point I didn't make earlier was related to the residents, right? This new compromise, I think, is what government's all about. And it takes out the politics from the decision-making, puts it in the hands of the people, and I think, I'm just really proud of this team up here, the seven of us, for coalescing around something that I think is a great compromise.
Counselor Hot?
Yes, I just wanted to bring up, because we're talking about passing one part to take to the voters this year, and then another part to take to the voters, you know, the next election. I think it makes much more sense to put 27 on the ballot, and if that doesn't pass, then put 26 on the ballot. I don't, we're asking, I don't, I don't think, I think it makes more sense not to break it up the way it's being broken up.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Counselor Demond?
Yes.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hot?
No.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Nermella?
No.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
And Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 5-2 vote.
If I may, just ask one question about the guidance to staff. There are two possible outcomes now that this is going to be on the ballot. One is that it will be approved, and there will be wards. The other is that the voters could refuse it. I understand that you would be interested in putting a second question, or having staff put a second question together, expanding the council only if the wards are approved. You are not interested in expanding council if everyone remains elected at large. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could-
City Attorney?
Just procedurally, as to where we are in the agenda right now. Now that Counselors' Bill 26 has been approved, I would recommend a motion to postpone Counselors' Bill 27 indefinitely, as it was agendized for tonight for consideration. So that would be my suggestion.
Thank you. Counselor Demond?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to table Counselor Bill Number 27 indefinitely.
Mayor Potem?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to indefinitely table Counselors' Bill Number 27. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Counselor Azadi?
Yes.
Counselor Hot?
No.
Mayor McNally?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Nermella?
Yes.
Counselor Ireland?
Yes.
Counselor Carmelia?
Yes.
And Counselor Demond?
Yes.
The motion passes on a 6-1 vote.
City Attorney, do you need anything else?
Thank you, Mayor. As that concludes the special meeting agenda, but for two executive sessions, I would ask that City Council consider the following titles, which are proposed for you tonight on the agenda. The first executive session is for the purpose of discussing strategy and progress on the proposed sale of property, determining positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, and instructing negotiators regarding 7731 Knox Court pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 111(c)(3) c2 and Colorado Revised Statute 2464024e1.
I will poll council to ask if you were willing to go into these two executive sessions. Please state your name and that you're willing to go into executive session, and we'll hold things confidential.
And actually, if I could just save everyone a little time, the second title, I'll read them both-
Sorry.
-so that you can poll your colleagues as to both executive session titles. The second title that is proposed for you tonight is an executive session to discuss the city's position on issues subject to formal negotiation and the status of negotiations regarding the collective bargaining agreement between the city and the Fraternal Order of Police Local Number 25 pursuant to Westminster Municipal Code 111(c)(3) c7 and Colorado Revised Statute 2464024e1.
Thank you. So state your name and that you're willing to go into both executive sessions, A and B, and that you'll hold things confidential.
Obie Azadi, yes?
Claire Carmelia, yes.
Demond, yes.
Nancy McNally, yes.
Sarah Nermella, yes.
Amber Hot, yes.
Christine Ireland, yes.
The special meeting is closed, and we will go into executive session in our boardroom. Thank you, everyone. Yeah, you can have fun.